Welcome to this April the 14th Caddo Parish Commission Work Session Meeting. Commission President Watts is absent today due to a medical emergency and I will be cheering. First of all, I would like to ask that each and every one of you would please silence your cell phones. Please put your cell phones on silence. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you. Commissioner Crackman is absent. Commissioner Greg Young. Commissioner Thomas is absent at the moment but in the building. Commissioner John Paul Young. And Commissioner, for the record, Commissioner Thomas has entered as well. Commissioner Burrell, absent at the moment. Commissioner Jones.
Present.
Commissioner Gage Watts is absent. Commissioner Blake is absent. Commissioner Atkins.
Here.
Commissioner Cothran.
Here.
Commissioner Lazarus.
Here.
Commissioner Emerson.
Present.
You have eight commissioners present, four absent. That does constitute a quorum.
Okay. I'd like to ask Commissioner Greg Young if he would lead us in the invocation and Commissioner John Atkins if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's all stand, please.
Mr. Chairman, just one note here. I see that the current tally that shows here is nine to three, but you said eight to four. I just want to make sure the record properly reflects what your tally is.
That's correct. I believe the reason being that Commissioner Gage Watts's vote pad is logged in, but she'll be marked as an abstention. That's just a fact, a matter of how the voting system works.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Lord, we thank you once again for the opportunity to come together with your family, Lord, and allow us to take advantage of this opportunity to be loving and to be caring and to be sharing and to promote goodwill among all of our citizens. Lord, in Jesus' name, God, give us the wisdom today, Lord, to explore ways more than ever to bring justice and peace to our community. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Active-duty military may render a hand-to-brow salute as well as reservists and also our first responders. And let's please remember our missing, our POWs and MIAs. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice, our own.
Thank you all. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
That brings us to agenda additions, and I'm not aware of any agenda additions at this time unless you have any, Mr. Chair.
No, sir.
Okay. Then we will move forward to citizens' comments where citizens are asked to fill out a comment card and submit them in the box to my left here. This is for all, I'm sorry, comments are limited to three minutes, and these are for issues other than zoning. And I believe we have received two citizens' comment cards, and there are no additional cards in the box at this time.
Thank you. The first will be Mrs. John Glover. You will come forward, state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes and you may proceed.
Good evening, Commissioners. John Glover, 9100 Walker Road, Apartment 217, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71118. Before I start with my comment on our new entry system out front, I want to thank the Chair for the Economic Development Committee. Today I learned a lot. I learned that there are just not one set of NGOs, there are two. And with learning that, it gave me a better picture of how it was and is that Oasis, House of, forgive me, Louisiana, had come to submit an application. For that, Chair, I thank you for that information. Now moving on to getting into the building. I came in earlier today coming to the committee meeting, and I was met with and had no problem about being scanned, but I had a problem with having my picture taken, me having to put my name into the device when I'm coming to a public meeting. I can only imagine how chaotic that would have been had it been a number of us standing, waiting to come into this setting. Not only that, but because there was not an awareness of the committee meeting, having those personnels of the commission to try to find out who it is that I need to attach your name to, that you're going to be saying, this is where you're going to be. I think it's very invasive. I think it's overreach. Again, I have no problem going through the scanner, making sure that there's nothing in my, on my possession or even on my persons that can bring harm to anyone that comes into this chamber, but to have my picture scanned, I'm looking at myself right there, that is not needed, you know, to come into a public meeting. Now, if this is something that we're starting new, we definitely need to get the word out because can you imagine? I'm just one that came to the committee meeting that did not appreciate having to stand there, put my name in the system, then, you know, have your face scanned and never really appreciating why that was necessary at all. Again, I thank you all for your time. I thank you for the service that you provide for us. Chair, I thank you so much again for me learning what I learned today because knowledge is power, and when you don't have that knowledge, no power is present. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Mr. Marvin Mohammed. Mr. Mohammed, if you would come forward, state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes and you may proceed with your commentary.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To the Caddo Commissioner, Parish Administrator, and to the rest of this esteemed commission, I rise to speak on an item that is under consent agenda number 144, which is dinner with the Houston Rock and Travel Center that was previously finished. First of all, I want to say that I am grateful to this body, not this one particularly, not all the members, but the one previously that voted me in to sit on the Caddo Parish IDB. And whilst a member of the Caddo Parish IDB, we had the privilege and honor to host members of Edgeman Holding, their legal team, formal parish administrator, Dr. Wilson, the parish attorney, Dr. Fager, and also at that meeting, the parish clerk, Mr. Emerson. And in that meeting, there was a discussion and a resolution came forward. And when I say a resolution, I mean the final resolution. And in this resolution was a cooperative endeavor agreement where the parish agreed to go into an agreement with Edgeman Holdings. In the tune of about two parts. First part was a reimbursement pilot because they invested over $1.8 million just into the infrastructure at that, at that location because there wasn't any water, there wasn't any electricity, there wasn't any gas, there wasn't any fiber. So we went into a, so we agreed to do a reimbursement pilot for that, which would have only commenced only after the building was completed. The second part of that agreement that we went into was a, we agreed to, to create an economic development district where we would, the parish would level a 2% sales tax and/or a 2% hotel occupancy tax. And so to the commissioner that authored this resolution, this ordinance, was in fact moving in the spirit of what the parish had already agreed. I would, I would liken the parish to reach out to legal counsel and to, to ask, what is the risk of us not moving forward with something that we have already agreed to do? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohammed. I have no other comments at this particular time, and I would just state for the record, this Thursday, there will be a public hearing on this particular item. The consent agenda is just automatic, it moves forward to Thursday. So the final vote and another public hearing will be held on Thursday at 3:30 at the commission meeting. Okay, at this time, next item, please, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you so much. That brings us to visitors where today we do have a visit from Kristin Delahoussaye with the Capital Area Finance Authority.
Please state your name and your business and your address, and you may proceed.
Okay, I'm Kristin Delahoussaye. I'm with Capital Area Finance Authority, and we are a local housing finance authority in Baton Rouge, Louisiana. Capital Region is the East Baton Rouge Parish and the eight surrounding parishes around it. But we have been in Caddo doing our business here, I think, since 2020 or 2021, I can't remember, but we entered into a cooperative endeavor agreement to be able to offer down payment assistance to the community here, and it has been very successful since we've entered it. A year and a half ago, some of you may remember, I came in because we, because the rates are so high, our programs really weren't performing, so we issued a tax-exempt bond, $40 million. That was a year and a half ago. We have about $1.4 million left. And just to tell you how successful it's been here, they did 46 loans in Caddo. So the way we go about it is we go into all these parishes, get permission, they allow us to come in, and so we're in 62 parishes. Out of all those parishes, Caddo was number two outside of East Baton Rouge Parish with the 46 loans they did, which was about 24% of that $40 million. That was helping your first-time homebuyers that needed that assistance with down payment. They needed help with the closing costs, prepaid items. As everyone knows, mortgage rates are still extremely high, so our programs that we have are still not really performing. So we are going on March, I'm sorry, on May 15th to the bond council to get some more volume cap, but this time we're going to ask for $100 million, and we're going to parse that out into three. So the first one that we roll out will be in June, will be another $35 to $40 million, and then we'll just kind of hold on and see if these rates go down, then we need to do another one, we'll be able to roll out another one. Unfortunately, because we're a little behind, there'll be a little gap because that $1.4 million's going to be gone in probably two weeks. But hopefully, we'll be back in the market here by June. So what I'm asking today is just so that if y'all have any questions about our program, what we're doing, how we're doing, doing it, I would love to answer those questions because when we go to the bond council, May 15th, we will then have a TAFRA hearing, which you will get information on the TAFRA hearing, and there'll be a resolution that you will have to sign that says, yes, we will allow CAFRA to come back in and offer this program. That's, that's what I'm here today. I'm actually having to go to all these different parishes. So I usually, last time, I think we came after the TAFRA hearing, but now we're having to come ahead of time since we are kind of behind the eight ball. So does anybody have any questions about, I know there's some new people here, but does anybody have any questions about what we do?
Okay, I have Commissioner Atkins, number one, Commissioner Jones, number two, and Commissioner Cothran will be number three.
Okay.
Commissioner Atkins.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Present again. And Commissioner Greg Young.
All right.
Will be number four, okay?
Are we ready? Okay. I'm sorry, and we've gone through this in the past, it's just been a while. Can you remind me again of the structure and what the advantages is, what the advantages are of your service offering to the citizens of Caddo Parish?
Yes. So this particular tax-exempt bond is for first-time homebuyers. The other programs that we have, you don't have to be a first-time homebuyer, but those really haven't produced in two years or so. So to speak on this specific, you have to, 80% or below area meeting income, and then you can do VA loans, RD loans, FHA loans. The credit score is a 620, your debt-to-income ratio is 50%. So these, these first-time homebuyers that enter, a lot of them don't have the down payment assistance, so they get 5% assistance on that final loan amount, and that is to help them with their down payment. It can help, it can even help with the buyer's compensation on realtor, anything that is really a hindrance for somebody getting in that home. And it's structured in a, in a soft second, so there's a lockout period of 10 years. If they, if they live in the house for 10 years, they do not owe anything. Well, I should say there's a lockout period of five years. After five years, on that 61st month, it starts to deplete, but if they stay in the home for 10 years, it's completely forgiven, and it's considered a soft second because there's no payment on that second.
The balance of the mortgage is forgiven?
I'm sorry?
The balance of the mortgage is forgiven after 10 years?
No, I'm sorry, the balance of the, of the assistance. So say they get $10,000.
Sounds like that really is a good deal.
If they get $10,000 on that assistance and they move out, then before that 10 years, they have to pay it back. If they move out before the first five years, then they pay all of it back. After that 61st month, it starts to deplete. It's probably anywhere between $150 to $200 a month that it starts to deplete. So if somebody, say, wants to move out or refinance in eight years, there's only going to be a portion of that money that they got that they have to pay back.
Does the parish have any liabilities associated?
There's zero liability, no, no risk to the parish whatsoever.
Okay. So what, do you have to, do we have to vote on it, or is it just a courtesy?
No.
I know we voted on it in the past.
You have to vote for it because we, because we're local and we're not state, our jurisdiction is only that nine parish region, so you do have to vote on it. That's what, that's what they did last time, they voted on it, they signed off on the resolution. I think, I know Donna helped. Yeah. So once we, once we get the resolution, which will be, it'll, it'll explain all of the parameters of.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I think, sorry, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. The legal, I might want to.
Yeah, I was just going to say, the parish also collects a fee on this program, and that's what we've used to fund the wheelchair, chair ramp program. It has been.
Yeah, and I do, I want to, y'all collect money on our, what we call TBA programs with the, with the bond. We don't share fees.
We don't collect a fee on that one.
Yeah. But you know, you're, you're, yeah, I mean, you're looking at getting somebody in the home and then tax, you know, tax, property taxes and things like that, plus it just being a benefit, but we're hoping when those rates go down, those programs will start to come back too.
Okay.
So those will be the ones that we share the fees.
Those, that other program has been down, we haven't been collecting a fee for a while.
And I want to say, it was over $100,000. The last time I was here, I can't remember, I wish Stormy was here, I apologize, we came with a check, like a, you know, and did the picture and all of that with everybody. But again, it's, we do this through lenders and mortgage companies, and so we have somebody here, we have a couple of people here that really do it very well.
So the biggest advantage for us is helping our citizens getting, getting into homeownership.
Yes.
With no liability to us, so.
Yeah, there's no liabilities, zero risk, we're taking all of that, so.
Next, we have Commissioner Cothran.
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of questions. First of all, how does a person that's listening, anyone else, find out about your agency? Because again, you're probably out there, but again, people don't know about this in some cases, again, first-time homeowner, some hearing. And second part to that, what is the mortgage rate that people usually go in at right now? I know it fluctuates, but.
What's the, I'm sorry, the rate?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, the rate with the bond is set, so it was set at 6.58. So there was, I mean, and, and a market rate last Friday, I think, was seven and a quarter. So you're, you're getting below that, and there's no loan-level pricing, so if somebody has a 620 credit score and they go get a market rate, it's going to be probably in the eight.
Correct.
Right? And so this is a fixed rate. We cannot tell you what the rate's going to be in, in May when they, they close, but we think it's going to be, what we're being told by our investors and our underwriters is that it's probably going to be better than 6.58, which is fantastic. And that's, that's really why we came in, and this is, the nation's doing this with these bond programs. We haven't had bonds. I've been at CAFRA almost eight years, and we were always doing these other programs that wasn't a bond, which is a little bit more restrictive, but because those rates were not coming down, we just had to issue that bond. But the way we get our, the word out is through our lenders and our marketing, and so, you know, I'm a member of the, of the Real Estate Association here. I've come up here before to do first-time homebuyers seminars. So we do, we do, you don't have to have a certificate if you're a realtor to, to tell your client about it or to help with the first-time homebuyer seminar, but we just rolled this out a couple of months ago, and it's been really successful where if they take an online course, which takes maybe 20 minutes, they get a certificate, and then they can use that to market. So we really, you know, want the lenders to get behind it, want the realtors to get behind it, and us come up here, do first-time homebuyer seminars. If you have, if anybody here has any suggestions on who I can partner with to go out there and do that, I'm, I'm happy to do that. I mean, we, we love to be in the markets that are helping us too, so.
The reason I ask that question because, you know, the first-time homeowner, you're somewhat apprehensive to go to a realtor and things of this nature because again, you're looking at your credit scores and things of this nature, so you're somewhat apprehensive. And the reason I ask, how can a person get in contact with you other than that would be, hey, can I call a number to find out about your program? And it could lead me to, hey, go to a realtor, no particular realtor, but you should be able to talk to a realtor to find out about this program.
Um, we, we, we do a lot of social media, so, you know, we try to, it's real cost-effective really, but we try to do a lot of social media, and so we have somebody helping us with that to drive them to our website. Our website, I think, is very friendly where you can go online and they have all the tabs. So if you're a homebuyer, you can click on that tab, and they have all the different programs. However, it's still, like you said, we know it's very overwhelming, so when they go on and they're looking at all the programs and they're trying to figure out which one, you know, they find our phone number, and we get phone calls. My drive up from Baton Rouge today, I had about four calls that I was talking to somebody. So what we like to do is if they don't go down and look at the lenders or the realtors, because obviously, the first step is going to a lender so that the lender can qualify them and, and then help them figure out what they're going to afford, and then the realtor helps them shop for the home. But a lot of times, people don't know. So when they call us, we ask a lot of questions, you know, and then we guide them to a lender that is either in the area that they're buying in or some, I mean, we have a lender here that does it so much that we sometimes send people that are, even if they're in Baton Rouge or some other parish, we send them sometimes to the lender here. But, so that's how we, that's how we promote it and, and get people to drive them to the lender. Now, when we do these first-time homebuyer seminars, they're great because we have a lender and a realtor. So if there are 10 people in that room, they're, they're, they're hopefully going to use that lender to get pre-qualified, and then that realtor go shopping. So it's sort of a win-win, and a lot of times we'll have a title company or other people involved in the home-buying process there to explain it because it is very overwhelming. I mean, I bought my house 20 years ago, and I still learn every time we teach one of those, so.
Okay, so if I'm hearing you correctly, a person could go to social media to find out about your programs in addition to realtors and anyone that's basically in the homeownership business and be able to get in contact with you.
Yes, oh, yeah.
So if one of my constituents called me this afternoon after hearing that, what would I tell them?
I would, I would love for you to tell them, either give them my name, and I can, you know, send an email, everybody can get, yeah, give them my phone number, and then I can direct them from there because, like I said, our website's very friendly, they can go on, they can guide, but again, they're not going to, you know, there's a ton of lists of lenders, there's a ton of realtors, and maybe I can help guide them and say, oh, you're, you know, you're in Caddo, let me, you know, you can use any lender, you don't have to, they don't have to be local, but I can guide them to a lender, I can guide them to a realtor. That's how I would, that's how it would work.
Okay.
But there is, there is an email address that's CAFRA, info@thcafa.org that they can go to, but they can also email me directly. I'm looking at that email address as well. But phone, email, most of the lenders that work here, you know, that know about it.
So that website, once again, was what?
Uh, W, it's thecafa.org. So it's www.thecafa.org.
And you're, you could give the number to Jeff, and he could shoot it to every one of us and go for you.
Yeah. If he, if he sends that out, my email address and my contact, then you'll have it, and anybody that gets calls or, again, if there's anybody in the community that you think that we need to partner with, we can certainly do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I see no one else. Administration, yes, ma'am.
Um, Ms. Kristin, I just want to let you know to get the language for the resolution to me as soon as possible.
Yes.
Because it would need to be on the May 5th work session to get passed before your May 15th bond commission appearance.
Okay, and if we don't have, we should have that resolution by then. We have a board meeting Thursday to, all of that, but if we didn't, we still have 30 days, could it get on the June? Because I know y'all changed, y'all made some changes, which you can do. Once we have the resolution for the TAFRA hearing, I'll send it to you, and then you can adjust and.
Okay, if you don't need it before May 15th, then that's fine.
Yeah, yeah, no, we, we just have to have it 30 days after, so that's why I'm having to get into all the parishes to just explain. Last time, we had the resolution to get, get it voted on, but this time, it's just, I wanted to explain what we were doing, how well it's been doing, ask the permission of the council to say, can we come back in? And then once the resolution, you get it and share it with everybody or tweak it, however you, however y'all do it. It's going to be exactly like the other one, except obviously, the dates are going to be different and the numbers.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll get it to you as soon as possible.
Okay, I see no one else, and that was going to be my comments relative to what the administration needs to do regarding the resolution and the time constraints. We thank you for appearing here today.
Thank you very much, and as soon as we have the TAFRA hearing, we'll get that out as well so everybody can get online if they wanted to attend that.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, order, Mr. Clerk, please.
Thank you. That brings us to reports where you have an admin report attached.
I just want to take this opportunity to thank all the employees who participated and loved the boot week last week, and we went out to various sites with, throughout Caddo Parish and cleaned up, and I think the employees were really glad to help in getting out there and just realizing how much of a problem we had and, and them being pleased with knowing that they helped address that problem as best they could, so just want to thank them for that. Reminder that we do have Caddo Day at the Capitol next week, April 24th. We are also having the pin ceremony on Friday, May 2nd at 1:00 PM. You all are invited, and we hope that all of you can attend. You have the March 2025 financial statements at your station and the juvenile update. We have 16 in detention, two 17-year-olds, one LJJ, 24 CCC. We have 423 probation cases. That concludes the administration report, and we'll take any questions at this time.
Okay, any Commissioners, any questions? Okay, Mr. Atkins, anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, just Mr. Atkins, go ahead.
I wanted to get a clarification, Frank, what kind of the pin ceremony, did you say May 2nd at 1:00?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I see no more questions or comments relative to the administration report. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, that brings us to commission, commission remarks, communicates, reports, and other items related to work session agenda.
Okay, let's get on the board, if you would. I see Mr. Young, anyone else? Mr. Cothran? Mr. Atkins? Mr. Young?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman. I don't have anything actually to come in on in terms of the committee reports today. These items that we discussed today are going to be continued at our next meeting on May the 5th, and I'll take that opportunity to address some of the, some of the concerns and issues that we followed up on today. I'd just like to take this particular moment to recognize a very good friend over there in the pink shirt, if you don't mind, standing up, Joe Friday. Mr. Friday, someone that I worked at the postal service with for a number of years at the plant, and thank, Mr. Friday, I think you were the union president for the mayor handlers' union for quite some time, and I just want you to know that I really do appreciate the service that you provide, both as a union representative and also as a postal employee. As you know, you know, the postal service is kind of under fire right now, so, you know, we're going to join spirit your hands and pray that our service, our postal service remains very viable for our community. But thank you so much for being here today. I'm not sure, you know, what your business is, but I want you to always feel welcome coming here to the commission. Thank you so much. Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Cothran?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to acknowledge some things that happened with Love the Boot as well. I didn't see any employees from the parish there other than Commissioner Jones, but over in the Cedar Grove area, we had the people that contributed was Matt Olive, of course, as I said, Commissioner Jones and myself, the juvenile justice, goodwill, Shreveport property standards, and in that particular area, we collected about 53 bags of trash. Okay, and down in the Southern Hills area is about 40 bags of trash, 12 tires, and some mattresses as well, and the schools that was involved in that were Summerfield School, Ridge Woodberg, and the Aldi and Starbucks provided donations of snacks as well. So the thing is, again, we had an enjoyable time, we got a lot of trash off the ground, and the thing is, my desire. and the thing is, my desire is that the city would stay as clean as it is, it was Saturday, but in walking this morning, I already see it's not gonna happen sadly, okay? Uh, so that's my frustration. Even though people don't throw it out, I appreciate those that took the time throughout, not only this parish, but throughout the state, to actually pick up other people's trash. And the thing is, I know, um, Commissioner, uh, Emerson's gonna talk about that a little later, but in addition to that, we, we just gotta do better. We have to do better, I promise you, that's not the way that our parents brought us up because I promise you, anything was in the yard, I best had picked it up when I walked out the house and then I could go play or do whatever I was going to do. Uh, but we've kind of lost some of that today for whatever reason. And, uh, had the opportunity to visit a funeral today as well, uh, Specialist White, and I'm sure, um, Commissioner Emerson would expound on that a little bit more, but the thing is again, is that this was a veteran, a homeless veteran. And the thing is, the reason I talk about that is because, once again, there are many men and women that went overseas and did some things. Some didn't come back, as in being alive, some came back, but they left a portion of themselves overseas. And the thing is, again, as citizens, we must be very, very aware of what's going on with our military personnel, uh, young men and young women, uh, that are willing to sacrifice their, their lives on a daily basis, so, thank you, Mr. President.
Alrighty. John, you changed, okay. Uh, I'd just like to, uh, chime in in reference to, uh, what Commissioner Carton mentioned about Specialist James T. White, he was homeless, however he did, served and he served honorably. And, uh, what we at American Legion Post 450, the Buffalo Soldiers Shreveport Chapter, Disabled American Veterans, Chapter Number 30, we don't want to see any veteran, uh, be interred without anyone there. So the word was given to us that, uh, this gentleman had no one, uh, that was able to, would be able to attend his services, so we rallied to call and we showed up and greeted numbers today. And if memory serves me right, he, uh, he expired in January the 23rd, so that tells you his, his body was, wasn't claimed. So, uh, so we went out and he had a wonderful service and that's why Caddo Parish is veteran family and we want to make sure that we get that out. We don't have that on the signs at I-49 South and North just for, uh, a slogan, we are sincere about that, so we want to make sure that we let everybody know, uh, that we truly care about our military and our veterans in Caddo Parish. And I would be remiss also if I would not mention, I don't know how many of you are familiar with the death of the four, uh, United States Army servicemen that were in, uh, Lithuania. They were, uh, on a, a, a training mission, which we do with a lot of our allies throughout the world, a lot of things that, uh, our men and women are doing in service that we never know about until a situation of this magnitude has happened. And, uh, it was an accident, whereas they had the M-88 Hercules armored, uh, vehicle recovery. Now, this is a massive machine that's operated by four personnel. It can lift 70 tons, it can lift an Abrams M-1A, uh, main battle tank, if it's, uh, disabled during combat or get bogged down or also doing repair work. So can you imagine those four people? They were trapped in a swamp and submerged in tons of metal. And guess what? The Lithuanian government honored them once they recovered their bodies. However, there was no one, no one, other than their family and authorized military personnel to receive their bodies at Dover Air Force Base. So we want to recognize that, make sure nobody from D O D, nobody from the, uh, administration as the president, most presidents go and receive the bodies of our fallen warriors. So we will always recognize them and today I want to recognize Sergeant Jose Dunyes Junior, 25, of Joliet, Illinois, Sergeant Edwin F. Franco, 25, Glendale, California, PFC Dante D. Tiatano, 21, Dito Wong, Staff Sergeant Troy S. Nutson Collins, 28, of Battle Creek, Michigan. As we say the pledge, we always mention that, never forget our POWs and MIA's, we should not ever forget or disrespect any fallen member of our military. Our schedule should not be so busy that we, uh, forego our duty and responsibility to our military and our servicemen. So I just thought that was an atrocious thing and this isn't something that I'm doing at this present time. All of you know how long I've chaired this committee as well as a national committee with veterans and states, that I always recognize everything. I recognize the three, uh, the Marines that died in California in, in training mission in the amphibious, uh, vehicles. I recognize the helicopter, uh, personnel that died from South Louisiana. I recognize the 13 soldiers that died during the withdrawal from Afghanistan. And anything of this nature, I would not forego recognizing our military. At this time, uh, Madam Administrator, is Ms., Ms., Ms. Beecham in?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Ms. Beecham, would you, uh, mention something about the, uh, we're gonna have a press conference relative to litter on Thursday and, uh...
Good afternoon, commissioners, uh, Commissioner Emerson is referring to our War on Litter, Caddo Proud update press conference that we, we will be having Thursday, uh, 2:30 prior to the commission meeting and we will use that opportunity to update the public, um, as well as the media on, uh, where we are in our campaign on War on Litter. We've had several updates, several things that we'll be providing additional resources to citizens, um, a little bit about the efforts that we've made so far since our last press conference and that will be at 2:30 in the, uh, first floor government lobby chambers.
Okay.
Anything else we left out, Commissioner?
Now, any special protocols relative to security, if you want to attend that? What do we need to do?
I'm gonna yield to the administrator on that one.
Commissioner, we will work with the, uh, security team, but usually when you're coming to, um, chamber meeting or another organized meeting, you just have to go through the detectors, you don't have to submit your name and those, that type of thing when it's an organized, either this meeting, the council meeting or press conference, those types of things. But they do have to go through the detectors.
They, they do.
They have to go through the detectors, but not submitting the individual names and so we'll work with them, um, to make sure that that is the process, but that's my understanding of the process, because of the time it could take to try to get individual names and pictures of people who are just coming for a, a meeting in the lobby.
Okay.
Or in this chamber.
Right, thank you, thank you ma'am. 2:30, 2:30 P M, Thursday. And, uh, we, we set that so we can make sure that our student commissions for a day, uh, they should have wrapped up their tours and they'll be able to attend that also prior to the, uh, to the meeting. Uh, Commissioner Carton, did, okay, I put you on, uh, did you have anything to add relative to the ceremonies this morning?
The only thing is, I would share with people, uh, the one thing some people possibly heard back in January where, uh, Specialist, uh, White was shot at a bus stop minding his own business and I understand that the person that did the shooting has been captured to my knowledge, so once again, we're talking about a gentleman that, that experienced PTSD and like I said, if you've never been involved with people that have experienced PTSD or going through it at a particular time, it's really mind-boggling as a result of 18 years in the military, working psychiatry, I saw it a whole bunch. And the unfortunate part is that some people are able to actually work through it, some people are not. And the thing is, I say again, we as citizens of this country must do a better job in taking care of our own, thank you.
Commissioner Atkins?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Ms. Frank, to, to Mr. Bubber's point earlier, can you brief us on the protocol? Like if, if, if a citizen wants to attend this meeting, what do they have to do current, under the current protocol to access this?
My understanding that the commit, the citizen would, um, once they, uh, notified that they're going to council or commission meeting, they have to go through the metal detectors, but they're not supposed to have to do the picture and record your name and that type, but that was mine, but it, I just have to clarify why today that process wasn't necessarily followed, but now if they're going to another floor, um, to visit someone, we do capture that information and a lot of that, they're capturing a lot of that is to be able to, if there was, um, something, we don't know who the person was, we don't have any information about them and so that's why some of the names being captured when you're going to particular floors. That's my understanding, it's a new process, so I'll make sure, um, before your meeting on Thursday so that we can understand what the process is.
Well, thank you, Madam Chairman, not, or Madam, uh, Madam Director, but I'm just one person, but I certainly don't want it to become overly difficult for people to attend these public meetings and certainly to come into this people's chamber, it would, it, in my view, it shouldn't be made overly onerous.
No, then, then we, and that was, we had that discussion and that was the key is that, um, when you have these meetings, especially when, there are times when the chambers are packed, you don't want to, um, inconvenience people when they're trying to come attend a meeting and do their civic duty and hear what you all are deciding and so that was discussed and a part of that process was to be able to, uh, make it a little different from when you're coming to the meetings as opposed to when you're coming to visit me on the eighth floor. You have an appointment, um, that's different than you're just coming generally, so there, it, it, my understanding was supposed to be a different process, just wanna, um, I don't wanna...
In my view, even, even attending an appointment is, is a bit much to have them, have people photographed and all, but, you know, I'm no longer in a position to vote on that, but, um, I just wanted to pass along my, my discomfort with that policy, but certainly I think we all agree that for people to attend this meeting, we wanted to make it as easy as possible, so.
Yeah, I do.
Please, let's, let's try to tweak the process to ensure that people...
I understand, it's a new process and of course, there could be some kinks and, and we want to work through those and have the best process we can for the citizens.
Thank you, Ms. Frank, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Boy, going through that airport has changed too.
If I had a vote there, I might change.
Yes, I am.
Okay, Commissioner Burrell?
Okay, I'm just, I don't want to play the devil's advocate, but say if a person would come in there, come into the meeting and they go through the, well, they, they tell them they're coming to the meeting and they actually wind up coming into the common area and then going upstairs, how do they differentiate between the two?
They, they will, you can't get upstairs without a badge, so someone would have to, uh, punch the floor and, and identify the floor that a visitor's going to, you can't work the elevators without a badge.
Okay, when you say the badge, it's the...
Yeah, you're prepared.
Not the little, not the little deal that, that they are sticking on there? A security badge?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you, Madam Chair.
Did I miss anyone, anyone else, I miss anyone? Okay, uh, next order of business.
Next order of business is a president's report, did you have a president's report today?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll move forward, we're in old business schedules, so we'll move to new business where the first item today, uh, is 11.1 to consider advancing the introduction of ordinance 6529 of 2025, that's an ordinance to amend volume two of the Code of Ordinances of the Parish of Caddo as amended, the Caddo Parish Unified Development Code relative to the manufactured homes with all their provisions included herein and otherwise provide with respect thereto. This item comes from the P Z C.
I'm making a motion to advance this to Thursday's agenda and I'm going to make a motion to remand this back to the planning and, uh, Parish Planning and Zoning Commission because it appears that, uh, the, the reasoning for this was not articulated where it was properly understood, want to make sure that, uh, we got the proper understanding as to what we want to do. We've had issues relative to, uh, these, uh, mobile homes and prefab homes in neighborhoods where you have concrete brick dwellings and, uh, case in point is the intersection of, uh, Jefferson Page Road and Pines Road, beautiful homes on concrete slab, brick enclosures and then somebody stuck in those, those houses, just not compatible, so we want to make sure that that's understood. If I can get a, like, it's been moved in second to advance, uh, to Thursday's agenda. Okay, uh, I have, uh, Mr. Atkins, anyone else?
Thank you, um, Mr. Chairman, I support your, your proposal that we advance to Thursday and then remand, I just wanted to say I agree with your views on that, I think this needs to be more thoroughly reviewed in the P Z C as part of a more comprehensive solution, so I support your proposal. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other, okay?
Just as a point of consideration for those watching who may benefit from a little extra explanation, the, um, when a P Z C item like this finds it, it's way to your agenda, if you choose to remand it, you do have to introduce it first and then go through that process, which is what y'all are doing, but I'm just explaining that for those who might be listening and wanting to follow along.
And before we leave to the vote, I'd just like to acknowledge some of the, uh, citizens that are here in reference to this, uh, that was here, uh, sometime back when this issue came up, if you all would stand, please. Thank you all. Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, uh, ready to vote, Mr. Clerk?
Okay. And that motion carries with nine in support, none in opposition and three absent. Uh, that brings us to, uh, the 11.2, advanced introduction of ordinance 6530 in relation to case 25 dash 2 dash P, that's an ordinance to amend volume two of the Code of Ordinances of the Parish of Caddo as amended, the Caddo Parish Unified Development Code by amending the zoning of property located on the west side of Lynnwood Avenue, that's approximately 770 feet south of Flurnan Lucas in Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from I-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District to C-3 General Commercial Zoning District and otherwise provide with respect thereto. That item's in District 10.
Motion by Commissioner Jones, seconded by Mr. Thomas, Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to englobo and advance items 11.2, 11.3, 11.4, 11.5 and 11.6.
Second.
Thank you.
It's been moved in, uh, by Commissioner Jones and seconded by Commissioner Lazarus that we would englobo and adopt, uh, Mr. Clerk, would you read those?
Englobo and advance, sir.
Advance, uh, to Thursday's agenda.
And those items are advancing the introduction of ordinance 6530 in relation to case 25 dash 2 dash P, ordinance 6531, uh, ordinance 6532, ordinance 6533 and ordinance 6534.
Any, any comments relative to that motion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just want to point out as, you know, with any other englobo, it is never to discourage discussion, um, but I believe, and I have spoken with the authors of, uh, this legislation or the commissioners with these respective districts, uh, to have their blessing to englobo these items.
Okay. Seeing, seeing no... Okay, seeing no, no further comments, we'll vote.
All right, and that motion carries with nine in support, none in opposition and three absent. That brings us now to, uh, consideration of advancing introduction of ordinance 6535, uh, that is the first of your millage ordinances, these are not to be adopted until your June 5th meeting when you'll have a public hearing on them. Um, and it is an ordinance to set the general purpose and special purpose millages, providing for millage rate adjustments as allowed by Article 7, Section 23 of Louisiana Constitution of 1974 and Louisiana Revised Statutes 47 colon 1705B, levying and imposing taxes and assessments for 2025 on all property subject to taxation in the Parish of Caddo and otherwise provide with respect thereto.
Moved by Commissioner Victor Thomas, seconded by Mr. Jones, Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. President, um, I would like to, uh, make a motion to englobo and advance, um, ordinance number 11.7, 11.8, 11.9, 11.10 and 11.11.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Jones to englobo and advance 11.8, am I correct?
Yes, 11.7, 11.11.
11.8, 11.9, 11.10, 11.11.
Yes, Mr. President.
Discussion, please.
I'll yield to, um, I'll yield to, um, administration if they have anything they'd like to share.
Anything?
No, sir, these are, uh, your, uh, property tax ordinances and, uh, we'll, when you vote on June 5th, we'll, uh, have... June 5th, we'll have a discussion. I think one is to, all of them are the same except the 11 that you normally adopt, but 11.7 and 11.8, one is adopting the, the millages you adopted for 2024, and the other one is adopting the maximum authorized millages.
Okay. I see no discussion. Ready for a vote?
And, okay, thank you. All right, that motion carries with nine in support, none in opposition, and three absent. And that brings us now to 11.12, which is a advance to consider advancing the introduction of ordinance 6540 of 2025, an ordinance dedicating 50% of the income generated from the parish share of sports wagering receipts to the Economic Development Fund and amending the general fund and the Economic Development Fund for sports wagering revenues and otherwise providing with respect thereto.
Moved by the chair, seconded by Mr. Jones. This is a 5% of the sports wagering, weight, sports bets wagering that's been instituted in Caddo Parish now, and I'm asking that 5% of the proceeds from that particular venue be put into the Economic Development Fund, which did the same thing with the video poker some years back, and it worked out quite well. That way, we have something going in for economic development. It's not from a tax, but it's from things that people willfully do. And I ask that we advance this for Thursday's agenda. Any other comments? Don't see anyone. Ready for a vote, Mr. Clerk?
Okay. Commissioner. Looks like everybody's votes are locked. And that motion carries with nine in support, none in opposition, and three absent, and brings us to consider the next item, which is Resolution 25, advancing Resolution 25 of 2025. That's a resolution opposing Senate Bill 74 of 2025 in the regular legislative session of Louisiana Legislature relating to the adult prosecution of juveniles and otherwise providing with respect thereto.
Moved by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Stefan Jones. Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. President. In the absence of the author, I would ask that we advance to Thursday's agenda. That's all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anything, Mr. Jones? Okay. Any other comments relative? See none? We're ready to vote? Okay. One moment. Go ahead.
You might, Commissioner.
I would recommend that everybody get an opportunity to really dig in deep in this particular Senate bill because the thing is, if you look at what just happened with the different amendments that was just voted down, this is just a counter to it right now. So the thing is, please, 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 read Senate Bill 74 to see exactly the language that's in it at this particular time. Thank you.
I see no other comments. Ready for a vote? Okay. Who already voted?
Commissioner John Paul Young? It looks like he didn't log yours. Thank you. All right, and that motion carries with eight in support, one in opposition, and three absent. And that brings us now to your next resolution, which is advancing Resolution 26 of 2025. That's a resolution to authorize the acceptance of the Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire.
Motion by Commissioner Jones, seconded by Commissioner Thomas. Discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Thank you. I'd like to move to englobo and advance 11.14, 11.15, 11.16, 11.17, 11.18, 11.19, 11.20, 11.21, 11.22. I guess it's supposed, well, 11.23?
Can you leave out 11.24?
I, I am. I got you, brother.
And it does look like there's a numbering glitch on the agenda because the poet laureate and the visit from Leoni Fitzdrill-
11.25, are you okay with that, Commissioner Young?
Yes, yes, sir, Commissioner.
Okay, and 11.26?
Okay. So that is, that's the remainder of the new business with the exception of 11.24?
If it pleases the body.
Is that correct?
Okay. Any comments relative to englobo motion? Okay, if not, we're ready to vote?
Commissioner Thomas. It looks like, there we go. Thank you. That motion carries with nine in support, none in opposition, and three absent. And that brings us to 11.24, which is to consider advancing an appointment to the Animal Services Board. That is to appoint Whitney Abner to fill a vacant seat.
So, Mr. President, before we move on, 11-22, we got it twice, correct?
Yes. We noted that just in the motion. It was, it's just a clerical error, but both of those items were advanced to the, to the next agenda. Thank you for being specific about it. Make sure there's no confusion, but those, but both those 11.22s are advanced. We already did.
Your motion? Put it on the floor. Okay, 11.24. Appoint Whitney Abner RS to fill a vacant seat, four-year term on the Animal Services Board. I mean, yeah, Animal Services Board, and this was a recommendation from, I'm assuming the, our Animal Services staff. Any questions or comments relative to this? Mr. Young? Anyone else? John Paul Young. Okay, let's see. Where are you, John? All right. And then I have Mr. Jones will be after you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to state my reason for abstaining. I was recently attacked and bitten by a dog that's about to appear before this board, and our parish attorney asked me to abstain from appointing one of its members before that hearing. That's all.
Next, please. Who's next? Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Travis can come up for me, please.
How y'all doing?
How you doing, Director Clark? I just wanted the people to hear from you with, I guess, Animal Services is recommending this addition?
Yes, we are. We had a person over at the health unit, Ms. Constance, who is being relocated to a different building of some sort. I don't think she's at that particular location, so this was her appointed replacement.
Okay. Does Ms. Abner have experience with dealing with this type of board?
Um, I think I sent the information over to Ms. Michelle and Jeff so they can provide you with her letter of interest that describes her background and everything.
She does have a public health background, and, and that letter of interest should be attached on your agenda.
Okay, I see. My apologies.
No problem.
Okay. That's all I have for you, Director Clark. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I see. Mr. Commissioner Carthron?
Thank you, Mr. President. The thing is, I see the appointment, and it's by Animal Services, and the thing is- I don't have to tell them to stay. She's not telling to stay.
Apologies?
Uh, yes, yes. Additional question. So the thing is, I heard you answer, Commissioner Jones, that this was a recommendation by you all, correct?
Well, we have to recommend the person to be brought to the body. Ms. Constance recommended the replacement to fill her voided seat.
On the Animal Services Board, if I could just provide some clarity, the Animal Services Board does have a very particular way that they appoint members. Each member has to have a very specific set of qualifications and come from a pool of particular people. And so, like Director Clark said, they get that recommendation from that pool of people, and then they send it to us, and then you guys, you know, decide upon that person and make the appointment. But yes, it is a little bit more specific than some of the other things that you appoint to. It, it has to be of a certain background for each appointment.
Thank you for the clarity.
You finished? Okay. Commissioner Gregory Young?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How you doing, Mr. Travis?
All right, sir. How you doing?
I'm doing fine. Some of the folks in the audience, they've been so patient to sit tight for the duration of our proceedings. I think it would be a very useful, a very useful time to explain, not only to myself, but for the folks who, who have endured this in the audience. Explain to, to us just what is the function of the Animal Control and Mosquito Board? What do they do for the parish?
Okay, the Animal, the Animal Services Board as far as the designation of dangerous and vicious animals? Okay, so you have a-
Is that what they do?
Yes.
That's the only area of their jurisdiction to deal with those bad, bad dogs?
Yes.
No mosquitoes? No mosquito control?
No mosquitoes? What do they do about mosquitoes?
Okay, you talking about the department as a whole, or are you talking about the board? I apologize.
The board.
The board. The Animal Services Board.
It's called the Caddo Parish Animal and Mosquito Control Board.
Yes. They don't, they don't hear mosquito cases, though. They-
Well, they might shoot. Wait a minute.
They are-
I was attacked. I was mauled just a few days ago.
But, you know, sometimes they get that big. But yes, they-
I got grief. I'm sorry, grief.
Yes, they hear, they hear different cases as far as dog-on-dog attacks, dog bites to humans and things of that nature. It's a collective body, a total of seven different individuals, one from law enforcement, one veterinarian, one person that works in the health community, which is the person that we're trying to replace right now, someone who owns an animal establishment, citizen-at-large for the city and for the parish. Like, it's several different people. So if a dog attacks someone, and I make the determination, hey, this dog is dangerous, it's not just my word. It goes to the board. And then that board decides to uphold the dangerous classification, or they can upgrade it to a vicious classification, which means the person will not be able to get the dog back, and that dog would be destroyed. So that is what that board does. That's the function that they have. They can also determine that an animal establishment has their permit pulled if they, you know, if they're having violations and things of that nature.
At the risk of our proceedings going to the dogs, let me just ask you a couple of follow-up questions. Okay, so now, let's say, for instance, if I have a very, very bad dog, and my dog gets loose, and in the family, hurt one of my colleagues here, and so he contact you all, and, and the dog is charged, essentially, right? Just like a person doing something bad, the dog, the dog is charged.
It, it will be quarantined for sure.
Right.
Is it a lot of different circumstances that constitute if it's dangerous or if this is a one-off instance or something like that?
Presumably, the dog has to, has to be brought in, right?
Yes, sir. Has to be brought in for the 10-day quarantine.
Right. And so this is what I heard now. I'm asking this question because I really want to know, you know, that the dog is actually brought in oftentimes, just like a person who, a human who's been charged, and the dog is literally put on trial. Is that accurate?
It's really the trial of the owner. It's not really the dog that's on trial. I mean, it's the animal's actions, but the animal was probably only able to run at large due to the negligence or irresponsibility of the owner. So-
Okay, and so you have two choices. You, well, three choices, actually. You can dismiss the charges, right?
The board can.
Right, the board. We're talking about the board. Okay, and then there's two tiers under which the dog can be?
So a dangerous dog would have to be spayed or neutered. If it leaves that property, it has to have a muzzle on. There's a special collar that it has to wear. It's color-coordinated. It's red and yellow. Has to have a muzzle if it's off the property, and a sign needs to be posted on that dog owner's home. That's a dangerous dog. Now, if it's deemed vicious, then the owner doesn't get it back.
And what happens to that, that dog?
The animal is destroyed.
And so is it lethal injection? Do-
It's humanely euthanized, sir.
Well, you know.
Oh, no, no, no. Yeah.
Okay, so if the dog goes on that less tier, and if the dog has to wear that muzzle, under what circumstances does the dog have to wear the muzzle?
If it's off of its property.
Okay.
So if you take it to the park, or you go into your relatives' house and all of that, you know, it's supposed to have the muzzle on. Now, granted, we don't have cameras everywhere to see if people are abiding by that, but if that animal is observed running at large or is involved in another incident, then it can immediately be upgraded to vicious without actually biting something, biting another animal or person, because it's showing that the animal owner is not taking the dangerous dog stipulation serious.
Got you. And so is this like a six-month, five years, or is this a-
For the remainder of his life, it will be, it will be deemed dangerous. I've done plenty of follow-ups. A dog don't even have teeth anymore, but it's still deemed dangerous. I'm, I'm serious. Yeah.
Thank you. So now he's a gummy?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your intelligence. Thank you so much.
No problem. No problem.
I've been thoroughly educated. It's been kind of humorous.
Yeah, no problem. No problem.
What can be done?
Yes, sir. And, and also, I'd like to mention that if an animal is deemed dangerous somewhere else in a different jurisdiction, and we find out that it's in Caddo Parish, it's automatically deemed dangerous here. We've had some from California. We've had some from across the river and other places, but that designation is going to follow them. Yes.
Well, thank you so much.
Yes.
No problem.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Atkins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to point out, as, as Mr. Clark said, Ms. Abner is applying for the public health seat on, on your board.
Yes.
And per the letter attached, she is a professional sanitarian. I'm not sure what a sanitarian is. I guess it's about professional health and cleanliness with respect to the, or the environment in which we live.
Yes.
So that's why I made the question about mosquito control, because I guess that's why she's on y'all's board, to make sure that we, that we have those issues in mind, too, as, as people move forward.
I'm not certain about the mosquito control part because-
Anyway, that's just my hypothesis, but I'll leave it at that. But I guess that's what the RS, it's Whitney Abner RS, and I assume that's registered sanitarian or something like that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to clarify for everybody that in the letter, it does say Caddo Parish Animal and Mosquito Control Board, but it is actually the Caddo Parish Animal Services Board. And she currently serves in the role as Caddo Parish Environmental Health Manager. So I wanted to clarify that with her. That's all. Thank you, Mr. President.
All righty. Like, we got to the meat on that bone.
To the grocery.
And then, any other? Okay, where are we, Mr. Clerk?
I think we are awaiting a-
A vote?
We have a vote that we're ready for. We've got the motion second.
Congratulations.
And that motion carries with, let's see, eight in support and four absent. And that now brings, I'm sorry, that is not four absent. That is one abstention and three absent. And that brings us now to communiques and committee reports.
Anybody? I'm gonna get on the board, please. Let's see. Who do we have? Well, Commissioner Carthron. Anyone else? Okay, Commissioner Carthon?
Hey, real quickly, I just want to thank the Shreveport Officer Corporate Homes for going through the Cedar Grove area and ticketing cars and things of this nature. I also wanted to thank property standards and animal control, particularly, there was a dog loose, got out the fence. They fixed the fence even to ensure that the dog stayed, the dog got out, but they said that they would write it up if it ever got out again, and the community was very pleased with the results of that. I would also like to thank Mr. Gene. There was a trailer in an area over in the Cedar Grove area that just kind of popped up one day, and he went and did the research and follow up to come, come to find out that the trailer did not have a permit. So again, I thank you for what you did in that arena.
That's it, sir. Mr. Thomas?
Commissioner Jones.
Come on, sorry. Commissioner Jones?
How are you?
I just wanted to address one of the special resolutions that was presented this weekend at the inaugural Jazz Fest on the Red. It was a really great event this weekend in downtown Shreveport. Hopefully, those who, who were not able to attend will be able to go on next year. It's really, really important to have these events as it stimulates our entertainment aspects, these safe, family-friendly events in our, in our town. They're always happening on the weekend. I'll do my best to try to make sure that I advocate for them and let everyone know what's going on. People always say there's nothing to do in Shreveport, but I beg to differ. People always say there's nothing to do in Shreveport, but I beg to differ. Every weekend, we are full of something that highlights our culture and just uniqueness of our area, so, um, just wanted to mention that to the people. Thank you, Mr. President.
Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, just to piggyback on Commissioner Thomas's, um, comments concerning the festival, um, I actually did not have intentions of going because I was tired from, from doing cleanups and outreachers on Saturday. But Commissioner Thomas basically drug me downtown, um, and I'm glad that he did, because I was able to, uh, take part and, uh, see, uh, I mean, Shreveport and Cattle Parish is a very, very talented area. We have so much, uh, here to be proud of, some precious gems. Uh, gave our young people an opportunity to be able to display their talent, uh, on, on a public stage as well. And so I hope this is something that we can support, uh, moving forward. Uh, again, speaks to other type of hobbies and recreational activities that are, uh, within our parish that don't involve throwing a ball or running or jumping or whatnot. Um, as much as I love sports, uh, I think any type of recreational activity is great, and so I think we need to support more efforts like this. Again, as I always do, want to shout out our Parks and Recreation Department, uh, for being a part of, uh, great things like this. And, uh, they continue. I'll do my live as I did last time. I had a pretty good response, um, from some of my constituents of all the things that we offer, um, that are recreational. And so there's so much to do in Cattle Parish. Um, and it's a beautiful place to be, uh, and that segues me into my next deal. Uh, Commissioner Carter mentioned this earlier concerning the cleanup, um, which I was more than happy to take a part of because I grew up in the Eden Gardens Pine Valley, uh, portion of Cedar Grove. You don't know Cedar Grove is broken down into subdivisions. But, uh, it was great to, to be there and take part of that cleanup. Um, the discouraging part was, is most of the people who were there participating, um, were old enough to be my grandparents. And I was discouraged by that because, uh, we're able-bodied, most people in my generation, to get up and get stuff done. And it shouldn't be the seniors in our community having to pick up the trash and keep things clean. I thank God that they're able to still do so, but I, I feel like my generation has the energy to do this, and we do so much complaining about what's not being offered and taken care of in our parish, and we get opportunities to put it into action and not just words, and we don't show up. And so I think, uh, we have to do a better job is that, uh, especially younger citizens in Cattle Parish, to get out and take care of the place that we live. And it's a really simple thing to do. You can just start with your own yard. If you just start where you live, uh, that will make your street beautiful, right? And if you have seniors who live on your street, if you would help them out with getting trash in front of their house, that would, that would at least start with our street, and it'll become contagious, because I've noticed, uh, in some communities, even where we were picking up on Saturday, there were stretches of homes that didn't have any trash, and you can tell that the neighbors are making, uh, an intentional effort to make sure that they all hold each other accountable to pick up the litter on their street. And if, if we can all kind of catch on to that, the place where we live will be beautiful, and there won't be as much blight or dilapidated houses when, you know, the yards are clean and they remain cut, and, you know, the lungs are taken care of. And so I know people get sick of hearing about litter, um, but this is, you know, uh, it's hard to ask people to, to plant where everything is an eyesore. And so, uh, I just, I just pray that some of us, uh, who are, uh, not just young at heart, but we're a little younger, can get out and, you know, put our head to the plow, and let's do the work that needs to be done, that those who before us have already done, and they should be able to sit on their porch and relax and not have to get out there and still do the heavy lifting when we're living in the community with them. And so, um, there are going to be more of these opportunities, and I'm hoping and praying that, uh, those who hear my voice, and, and I'll follow up on my live after the meeting, would come out and take part in these type of efforts. Thank you all.
Second time, Commissioner Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, my phone very clearly tells me tomorrow is Tax Day, uh, for those that are hearing me. But the thing I wanted to announce is that the Neighborhood Watch Program will be happening tomorrow at Riverview Hall and Theater from five-thirty to seven, which the, uh, Shreveport Police Department will be doing. Again, Neighborhood Watch Program. Thank you.
Commissioner Burrell?
Like, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I just wanted to, uh, reiterate the, uh, the very nice program that Cattle Parks and Recreation had out at Huntington. Um, a number of, of the commissioners did show up out there. Uh, Stroh Miles Swift was there. I think they partnered with, um, the mother of the young man that got killed over in my district.
Ms. Myers.
Ms. Myers. Uh, but it was an excellent program. Uh, I took my grandson out. He had a blast. Um, and I think at the same time, they, they had, uh, uh, baseball. There was a baseball camp.
Yeah, baseball camp.
Yeah, and they had another one with the soccer. Had about three involved at the same time.
They were going to do a photo of, uh, Pinchback Park.
Okay.
New AstroTurf, but they got rained out on that.
Well, uh, I wanted to commend Patrick and, and his organization, uh, because it's a very, it's an excellent program. I'm looking forward to the, the, uh, other activities that they have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. All right, see nobody else, so I'm gonna take my shot. Uh, Ms. Beecham, if you would, would you, uh, send an invite to the, uh, Public Works Department Director? I think Mr. Morgan. Invite him to the press conference Thursday, and also Michael Corbin with, uh, with Swepco. Because I see a lot of telephone poles just loaded down with signs tacked all on them. You know, we wanted to speak with him, have him out about that also. And, uh, is that, is that Ms. Green out there? Ms. Green, I, I hit another birthday in March, and I don't see as well as I do. Is that you? Ms. Green, if that's you, she is, uh, was, was the first, uh, board member of our parish planning and zoning board. Ms. Green, did you ever receive, we had a proclamation for, did you ever receive it?
Of course. I was aware that you have one. Since you had one, and you still have that, you don't have not received it?
You have not? Okay, we gonna, we gonna scour the town and see where, see where it is. I, 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 I know we had one. We gonna, we gonna look for it, but we appreciate you. Ms. Green was the first parish planning, uh, zoning board, uh, member, you know, once they passed that deal with the state, and we appreciate your service. And thank you for coming out. Okay, uh, Ms. Beecham, you got those two invites? Okay. Uh, all right. No one else on the board? Where are we, Mr. Clark?
We are at Citizens Comments Later Arrivals, of which we have none, uh, and so that brings us to consider the agenda.
All right, moved by Commissioner Jones, seconded by Ms. Carter.